Welcome to another episode of Cross Talk. My name is Kevin Tochi and I will be your host for the next 30 minutes. Now, as you have come to expect from this particular program when you turn us on to Whitman-Hanson Community Access, is what we try to do is utilize this program as a vehicle to inform the residents of the two communities that we serve, both Whitman and Hanson, on things that are going on. It could be upcoming races, or state, or federal, or even local elections, it could be about town meeting, events that are going on in the community, so it could be just something fun. But this particular program today, we're getting closer to town elections in both Whitman and Hanson. And we have a gentleman here who is going to discuss with us his candidacy for school committee on the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee. We have Marshall Ottina, welcome.
Thank you very much for having me, Kevin.
Did I say that right?
Yes, Ottina.
Ottina, and welcome to Cross Talk.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, it's the first of many appearances. First and foremost, tell us a little bit about yourself.
I'm 31 years old. I just moved to Whitman last year. Been kind of a journeyman. Once I graduated high school in 2003, I went immediately into the Marine Corps, did a few tours over there in Iraq, Afghanistan, and Lebanon. I came home, I went into the restaurant industry, as I did before. While I was in high school, I worked in restaurants where I met my future wife. And now, the two of us have two lovely boys together, a four-year-old and an almost-two-year-old, and I am a full-time parent with them. So, my job now is taking care of the two of them.
Well, first and foremost, thank you for your service to your country in serving and protecting us here. Second off, what is it about running for office? Is it that you thought you would get involved as far as a public service?
Well, when I was growing up, my mother was a school committee, a school committee member in Milton where I grew up. And it was something that, you know, and she was also a high school teacher, and education's always just been something that I think I took for granted, even being the son of a high school teacher. I took it for granted, and now I want to make sure that my kids don't make that same mistake, and I want to make sure that they have the best possible education they have, as well as the kids next door to them, the kids down the street, their friends. I want them to have the best. I don't have interest in anything really beyond school committee.
What, is this, I would take it, this is the very first time that you are seeking in office or being appointed to something?
Yes, this is my first kind of dip into the public waters.
Why now? Why now? Why not wait a couple of years? Do you feel that the time is right?
I do feel the time is right. I think there are a lot of important issues going on in the school right now that we know it's kind of a hot-button issue, but, you know, why wait?
Okay. Why this school district, other than that you live here? Why not get appointed to the Finance Committee? Why not serve on a Park Commission or something like that? Is it really education that you're looking to kind of delve into?
It really is. I mean, my whole priority is really just advocating for the kids.
Okay. What do you feel are some of the big issues? What are some of the issues that are percolating right now when it comes to providing an education to the children of both Whitman and Hanson?
I think, you know, the big issue that everyone's been talking about, it's all the buzz, is the student success budget. And it's been proposed, it's the result of years and years of cuts to the district, and the economy was down, and things had to be cut, and the schools kind of took a lot of that on, and the services were reduced. And now, we look at it and we see what the towns around us have, and what our kids don't, and it's time to put the foot down and say enough is enough. You know, we need to get these things back, so that our kids can have every opportunity.
What is your understanding of a budget? Have you had a chance to take a look at a breakdown of a budget, especially on a municipal level, or even the school's budget? Have you had a chance to look at it and kind of get yourself acquainted if you are elected?
Absolutely. I've been diving into the school budget, and the budgets of a lot of districts around us as well. I've been working with the Whitman-Hanson Supporters of Schools. My role in there has been kind of a lot of the research, bringing up data and going into the budget, to see, you know, what Whitman and Hanson is doing, what everyone, what Hanover, what Easton, what Holbrook, everyone around us is doing, and to see what can we be doing better.
What are some of the things that you feel that the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District could do better if it had more funding?
Obviously, the first, you know, the big issue, which all the principals spoke about this past week at the most recent school committee meeting, was the free full-day kindergarten. I wouldn't say free, I'd say tuition-free, full-day kindergarten. It's something that, you know, the studies have shown that the kids who do go to full-day kindergarten, they just have that little bit extra, and, you know, they'd make them a little bit more successful down the road. And, you know, it's great that Whitman and Hanson offer the kindergarten, but if not every student can get that, it's not equitable. You know, I can send my kids for the fee for full-day kindergarten, but what of the house next to me? What about the house down the street? It's not fair that my kids could have an advantage over anyone else just because I can afford the $3,200. Another thing that has been sorely lacking in Whitman-Hanson's budget is the professional development for teachers. They, I think they spend about $35 per pupil on, you know, making our teachers better teachers, whereas the state level is over $200 per pupil. These, you know, these teachers are being asked to do more and more with bigger class sizes, and taking on additional roles that maybe they're not trained for, and then we're not giving them the training to do those additional roles.
I know that, I know that these days, the biggest thing when it comes to a conversation, or when it comes to community, is social media. And there's a lot of buzz on social media, especially when it comes to this topic. It's a hot topic, and I know that the SOS Group is one of those ones who is, who are always in the middle of the conversation. What are some of the, some of the things that you see kind of tossed around or discussed that are accurate? Or that sometimes, some of the things that are being put out there may not be the exact truth?
The one thing that I do see a lot of, which definitely frustrates me, is that there is a lot of armchair quarterbacking. You know, that people will go and they'll find the one number that they're looking for, and that they won't take it in context. You know, numbers can mean two different things from the same, you know, if you and I look at something, we can see two totally different things. And there is a lot of that. I know there is a lot of concern, however, about the tax rate, and it's a valid concern, but I look at it more from an investment point. It's not spending, it's protecting an asset.
You take a look at, you know, the conversation, it seems as though you have one community, when it comes to social media, there's more of a buzz, there's more of a fervor, there's more of a conversation as to how the town should proceed, how members of certain boards should be proceeding when it comes to an override, which I believe is going to be split up between the two communities. What is it, 1.7 for Whitman, 1.3 for Hanson, something like that?
1.2, yes.
It's something in the neighborhood. We got 1.8, 1.2, but it's $3 million combined between the two communities. Do you find it interesting that you see one community more so than the other, really tossing, really tossing around the conversation, and really, you know, diving into, you know...
Well, I mean, I wouldn't say that there's more conversation on either side. I mean, there's definitely talk in Whitman, there's talk in Hanson. It's just, I don't know if it's a tone issue, it just feels a little more positive in Whitman right now. But, I mean, there are people very passionate on both sides of the argument, and, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna continue that way for the next five weeks.
What do you hear from people? I mean, have you had a chance to get out there, shake hands, introduce yourself? What are the first, what are the first few things that a person who meets you, what do they say to you, whether it's on the subject we just talked about, or anything that's school-related?
I mean, obviously, the first thing on people's lips are, "Are you gonna raise my taxes?" And I think they know that the school committee member can't raise taxes, all that the school committee can do is ask, you know, then it's up to the town itself. You know, "I can't raise your taxes, I could ask you if you would fund this," but it really comes down to the individual voter at the end of the day.
When you talk about raising taxes, that can be a sore point, especially when you have two communities that are bedroom communities, they don't necessarily have a lot of commercial industry to help them generate additional revenue. And then, when it comes to raising the taxes, it sometimes it seems as though you're pitting the people who have young children, or have children in the school system, against people who may, may have the kids have grown up and are on fixed incomes. How do you delicately balance, when you, you know, have a conversation with somebody who may be in favor of it, or might be like, "Oh, and don't raise my taxes"?
I would point to the recent override that failed in Hall, and the surveys, the studies that have come out after that, saying that for every dollar that was saved on taxes, that they ended up losing $4 on property values. You know, it's, it's tough. It's tough when you tell someone that you need to ask for more money from them, but if, you know, you have to look at it as a long-term point of view. We can't just think about today, we have to think about tomorrow. You know, a dollar saved now is not a dollar saved tomorrow.
Okay. I know we're talking a lot about the dollars, in the sense that we're talking about the override. What's your understanding of the override? Is this a one-time Band-Aid? Or is this something that is gonna have to be nurtured down the road, as you guys put forth annual assessments to the communities?
I think it is the first step in the right direction, and it also, the more that we do now, it lessens things down the road. When we talk about adding social workers in the schools, or we're adding them into the, at the elementary level, that just makes everything easier down the road. It saves costs that they'll be, you know, if a child gets the help that they need in third grade, they're not gonna have, their issues are gonna be much more manageable by the time they're reaching junior high and high school, and we'll end up saving money on that.
Okay. What's your understanding of some of the, when we look at capital needs, when you look at the two communities now, of course, you're gonna be a Whitman representative, if you are elected, what's your understanding of the capital needs of the district? Have you had a chance to take a look at some of the needs, whether it's from the high school level, down to middle school, and, you know, K through, K through eight?
On the Whitman side of it, it actually was just presented this past week, the school improvement plans for all seven schools, Whitman and Hanson. And there isn't a ton right now for Whitman. I think the main, you know, building improvements are more just in the safety and security standpoint. I know there are a lot of, a lot of bigger issues in Hanson right now, but, you know, the, what was presented by the building principals and Lori Lycus from the Department of Education, you know, everything looked fairly black and white in Whitman.
Okay. Other than financial, and as far as enhancing the education, whether it's bringing back more, bringing more programs online, or adding teachers, or specialty teachers, or more administrators, what other issues do you feel are in the district that you'd like to have an opportunity to tackle if you're elected?
I think one of the things that I'm really most excited about, on the budget that's been presented, is the new, the No-Adam science curriculum. Being the son of a scientist, I'm, it's something that I'm just kind of really passionate about. You know, the things that they're having elementary school students do now, are things that I wouldn't have dreamed of doing in high school and middle school, and that's, it's not, I'm not going back that far. But, you know, to teach, you know, robotics and coding languages to...
We're evolving.
Yes, absolutely.
We're evolving, and that's good.
We're making 21st century students. We're not, we're building kids that are gonna be able to work in a technology-driven world, and the sooner that we get that to them, you know, their brains are sponges at that age. I mean, I look at my four-year-old every day, and the things that he can do are amazing to me, and, you know, think that three years from now, he can probably be writing a computer program in his, in his classroom, is just astounding. And that's, that's the future that, you know, we need our kids to be able to live in.
Anything else, any other issue, any other particular issues that you'd like to tackle, or that you would like to firsthand, as an elected official, would like to be a part of?
One of the things that I have mentioned a lot in talking to people is that, a lot of people don't feel that the school, the school budget process is very transparent. I disagree with that, but I think it could be more accessible. Like, it's not, when I look at the things, I'm studying towards getting my CPA, so I look at financial documents, and it kind of makes sense to me. I don't know if there's that step that gets it from, you know, from the schools to everyone down on Washington Street, and everywhere else in Whitman. You know, if they're, if they can't see it the same way, it's frustrating, and it makes them not wanna take part in the budget process. I wanna be able to kind of bridge that gap between the schools and the taxpayers.
I guess, kind of going back to what you talked about, as far as transparency, I know one thing that I have, myself, as somebody who's been a member of the media for, for many years, and attended my share of town meetings, whether it's at Whitman or Hanson, or other communities here on the South Shore, one of the things that I hear a lot is, is that when you go to a town meeting, there, usually you can see the municipal side of the budget, but you can't really touch, or feel, or get an idea as far as the school budget. Now, I don't know if that, I don't know if that exactly is a conversation that folks have with you, or said anything towards, but do you think that if folks could see line by line, a budget, a school budget, that they'll have a better understanding as to the needs of the school district?
Absolutely, and they can, because that's presented at the school committee meetings. The tricky part is that Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, in and of itself, is a separate financial entity. So, the town cannot tell them how to spend the money, and I know, I know that's what a lot of people get frustrated about, but they can have input in it if they, they come to those meetings. You know, that's how part of the student's success budget was formed. We came, and we demanded that the school start paying their end of the bargain.
If this override, this override is not successful, whether it's at-town meeting, or on May 21st, what's your thoughts? I mean, what are your, either, give me your thoughts moving forward, how does the school district move forward? And is it something that you take another bite at the apple next year?
Only speaking for myself, it would something, if I were on the school committee next year, and this doesn't pass this year, I would be the first one to present it again next year.
Okay. What do you feel your role is as a school committee member? What do you feel your role is?
Pure and simple, just advocate for the students, and also someone that can bridge that gap between the schools and the town. I know there's a lot of disconnects, and a lot of people feel disassociated from the process, and I wanna fix that.
Have you had a chance to speak with anybody to get a sense or an idea as to where the school district could better itself, whether it's mathematics, whether it's English curriculum, whether it's other programs that could further enhance our students? Is there anything in particular that you're aware of?
I do think it is the science and math. I believe that, you know, the scores have been kind of faltering for a little while in there, and not to say that test scores are, you know, the bottom line for education, but that the No-Adam program that I had been talking about, you know, that really puts that focus back on STEM-based curriculum, you know, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, we'll see that down the road. We're not gonna see it, you know, in 2016, 2017, before we get that in there, the students that we have now, 10 years from now, we will see it.
The other conversation that a lot of communities around the Commonwealth are having is about Common Core. Have you had a chance to look at Common Core and kind of assess it for yourself? Are you in the, are you in the thought process of, "I'm against Common Core," or "Common Core needs to be given either reworked or another chance"?
I think reworked is probably where I land closest to. I don't, obviously, my kids aren't in school yet, so I don't see that coming home every day, but I think there does need to be, you know, just standard across the board, that, you know, that the kids in Whitman are learning the same things as the kids in Abington and Rockland, and across the state. Is it the curriculum, is it the teaching now? I don't know, but I wouldn't throw out the baby with the bathwater. You know, the skeleton is there, there are some things that might need to be fixed about it.
Any worries, and this is, this, myself, as a parent, I've always worried, is that, okay, so we're holding our teachers to standards, we're also paying attention to see how our children are scoring at certain aspects of their learning, as they're learning and going through, from kindergarten right up to before they graduate. Any worries that we're teaching to the test, and we're not necessarily trying to fully enhance them, their educational process?
I don't think so. I mean, I know the testing is very important, and, you know, a lot of people just see that, but if, the people that could have had a chance to see here, Jeff Simonak, the principal of the high school, when he was presenting some of the course offerings he's been talking about next year, they're not testable things. He's talking about offering forensics courses, and robotics courses at the high school. That's not gonna show up on, you know, your standard black-and-white form.
Sure.
And that's something that's really exciting about. I actually turned to one of the other parents I was sitting with, like, "I wish I could have done that." It's really exciting things, and you need to, the testing is very important, because it helps guide the students in the right direction, but it's not everything.
How about the athletic side of things? I know that as kids get into high school, athletics can play a role. Is that something that, that the school committee plays a role in, in regards to making sure that that's still something that's part of a child's educational experience?
I think it's very little what the school, is the athletic budget isn't really a part of the operating budget.
Right, right, right.
There's, it's kind of its own animal. But, I mean, it's very important. I'm actually gonna be coaching T-ball for the first time this year.
Really?
So, I know how important that sports can be to some kids, because there are some kids that that's, you know, is that what gets them through the day, and helps them get through school. It's very important.
Let's take a look at you. Let's take a, Marshall, the person, what's some of the things that, when you're not being a dad, what do you like to do in your spare time, as a regular guy?
I'm a big hockey fan, I'm a huge Bruins fan.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have, I have other horses in that race, too, it's fine.
Oh, okay.
I like quite a few teams. I'm pulling for the Capitals this year, I think.
Okay, why's that?
I'm a big Braden Holtby fan, he's a great goalie. He gave us nightmares a few years ago.
Yeah, he was, when he first came up, he was one of those guys who, between the pipes, he was, like, "Wow, this, how long is he gonna be able to do this?", but he's...
He's, yeah, he's, if he's not the Vesna, he's coming in second.
See, myself, if I was to follow a hockey team, if I was gonna follow somebody other than the home team, it would have to have a former, you know, a home-team alumni, you know, whether it's Milan Lucic, or somebody else who might be on...
I'm a big fan of LA, too.
Okay, or Tyler Seguin, yeah, or Dallas, you know, something like that, to follow. Okay, what else?
I love playoff hockey. It's the best time of the year for me.
It is, yeah. You see, you see more passion when it comes to that. What else? What else, other than being a sports fan?
Also, right now, I'm studying towards getting my CPA, kinda, well, after I got out of the Marines, I went into school for a little bit, and it just wasn't the right time for me, so now, I'm working on that, working on getting my accounting degree online while my kids are sleeping, so...
Okay. What's that like? What's that like as far as furthering your education? How important is it that you do that, as a, not only as a parent, but as also a member of the community?
It's very important, me, not only to show my kids that, you know, the path doesn't always go from A to B, there's detours along the way, but it's something, you never give up on it. And, you know, I thought I did for a while, until I kind of realized, like, no, I should be doing something more. And obviously, the things that I'm studying are the very important, you know, if I'm handling a budget day-to-day.
Okay. Anything else?
A big comic book fan.
Really?
Yeah, I'm a big Batman fan. I have not seen the new movie, I do not wanna see the new movie.
Whoa, you haven't seen the new movie?
No. I like books better than movies.
Okay, that's another thing. I will say, no spoilers here, 'cause I don't want, I don't wanna spoil it for him, but the, the little war that's breaking up between Marvel and DC Comics could only be good for those who like to go beyond the graphic novels and comic books, and wanna see it on the big screen, so, if you do have a chance to check it out, I would recommend it. Absolutely would recommend it. Kind of going right back to the seat that you're looking to hold now, I know you have, there's, we have Mr. Trotta, Mr. Colletti, who are currently on there as members, it's, you know, it appears as though, there's three of you vying for the two seats. Have you had a chance to speak with them about your candidacy? Have you had cordial, you know, meetings? What's that been like?
I've talked to Mr. Trotta a few times, you know, passing in school committee meetings, a little bit with Mr. Colletti as well, you know, I think we've just shook hands, but, you know, it is what I mean, you know, the school committee voted unanimously to present this budget, and I commend them for that.
Yeah. If you are elected, are you a type of person that you might, we might find you is, when there are subcommittees, you might find yourself jumping in on some, is there a particular subcommittee that the school committee has that you'd like to be a part of? Whether it's, you know, what, it has to do with anything with capital projects, whether it has anything to do with curriculum? Where would you find yourself as far as subcommittees?
Curriculum is something that I would like to focus on, but I do know that Mrs. McSweeney, who will be stepping down, she's been kind of liaison to the collaboratives, and it's something that I might wanna take, take an initiative with.
Okay. Anything else that we haven't touched upon, we still have about five minutes left here, that you feel is important, but I haven't asked you yet?
I know that when it comes down to, everyone's asking, you know, "Why should we think about how much everyone else is spending?". And it really comes down to, because our kids are gonna be fighting for jobs with those kids 20 years down the road from now. We can't just look at Whitman today, we have to look at Whitman in 2030, 2036. Are our kids the type of kids that are gonna be having high-paying jobs, and coming back and putting back into the community? That's, that's why I look at this as an investment, not just throwing our money away. I don't think of any of my taxes as throwing money away, but especially when it comes down to this. There, there are things that you can skimp on, education is not one of those things. You know, when you build a house, you don't put in a cheap foundation, maybe you get cheaper curtains.
It's basically what you're saying, is you don't, you don't build it the way the government would do it, which would be the three lowest, three lowest prices that are quoted, and you go with the, with the lower one. Well, that's what some people would say, honestly, is that's, you know, that's how sometimes, when it comes to government, and the government goes to put out something for bid, it's usually, you know, they get three bids, and they take the lowest one, or the one that's closest to the lowest, in order to get the job done.
I think that kind of reverse way of thinking is kind of how we've gotten to this position in the first place. We've been asking, "What can we afford?", rather than, "What do we need?". You know, the schools have been asking, they've been asked to work within certain limits, and they've done a fantastic job of it. They actually received an award for, you know, financial efficiency, so when people ask, "Oh, are there more ways that the schools can cut? When can we trim here?". And there really aren't, you know, these are the services they need. If they could do it any other way, they would have found a way by now.
Do you feel your role as a school committee member, if you're elected, is also somebody to be in the ear of elected officials, whether it's Whitman Board of Selectmen, whether it's state representatives, or the state senator that represents your district? Do you feel it's up to you as an elected official to be talking with other elected officials, to see what you can yield for the community?
Oh, absolutely. I've written to, you know, Rep. Cutler in Hanson, I've written to Rep. Deal in Whitman, Senator Brady, to get them, you know, make sure we're all on the same page, and fighting for their constituents, you know, even the youngest among them.
Well, Marshall, I'm happy to tell you that we got about three minutes left, and you've done a fantastic job for being, your first time in probably in ages, being in front of the cameras. If there's something that you could look at that camera and tell the folks at home in regards to your candidacy for school committee, what would you tell them?
I would tell them that the thing you are going to get from me is honesty. I know that there's been a lot of mistrust, whether it's contempt, or people, just the small-town politics over the past years, that's built kind of a rift between the community and the schools. You might not always like the things that I want to say, but I will never lie to you. I'm going to be open and honest, I want everyone to have, to play a role in the building of these schools together. We are the stakeholders of this town, living in the town is an investment.
That's it.
Yep.
How about as far as contact? I don't know if you're just somebody who just has a social media pages, or if you have a website, how can folks, if they wanna reach out to you, and ask other questions, or find out about your campaign, and kind of probe you as a candidate? How can they do that?
They can reach me on Facebook, I have a, I have a Facebook page on there. I've been posting a little bit on the Whitman Pride page, so if you don't see the link there, there'll be another one soon. You can reach me at (617) 892-5525, or at M.Ottina, O-T-T-I-N-A, 13@gmail.com. I'm happy to answer any questions.
And what do you do for the next couple of weeks? Again, we're still, what, five, four, five weeks away from the big election. Are you gonna be out there knocking on doors, is it matter of holding signs? What are you, what are you gonna do to get the word out about your campaign?
I will be, I'll be getting some literature out very soon. I think I'll be focused on that after town meeting. Obviously, the first big step is getting the contingent article passed town meeting first, you know, as far as the override is concerned. Once that's passed, then I kick it into May 21st mode, and I'll be getting pamphlets out, flyers, I'll be knocking on doors, probably pulling my kids in their wagon behind me, but I'll be out there.
Well, I would wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much, Kevin.